Great. Okay, we have quorum, so I'm going to start the meeting. Welcome to the February 7th, 2022 Beacon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, for unity.
For all.
Thank you. Kelly, can you do roll call?
Ms. Betterbit?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Galloway?
I don't see him, so delayed. Yep.
Ms. Johnson? Oh, I see her.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Ms. Stadler? Oh, I see her. Ms. Hewer?
Here, thank you.
So we don't have to review the fire exits. We've moved to Zoom because of inclement weather. I want to start with public comment, if it's okay with everyone. Gully Stanford is here who is who is a current member of the BOSI's board and is seeking to be nominated again tonight. And then I wanted to give him a few minutes to introduce himself.
Hey, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Landau. Gully Stanford, a resident of Hyde Park School District, and I serve, of course, with your very able representative and under your very able representative, Mike Reel, on the Board of Trustees at the BOSI's. And I know in the next couple of meetings, you'll be addressing nominations. There are two vacancies again this year, and mine is one of those vacancies. I was elected to fill and to complete an unfilled term. I would very much like to serve again. I won't take your time now. There's a letter, I think, in your inbox. I welcome any questions or concern us, and then people can address offline, but of course, would greatly appreciate your nomination and ultimately in April, your vote. You're also very ably represented by Ms. Stadler at the Duchess County School Boards Association, so I really don't have to give you any news, except that in the April meeting of the Duchess County School Boards Association is going to feature a presentation by Nicholas Millis, the really tremendous new principal of the Career Technical Institute. So I just encourage people to tune in for that. And if you're at a loss for anything to do on the second Wednesday night of the month, our BOSI's Board meetings are indeed virtual and open to the public, and everybody is very welcome to tune in. Thank you so much, Madam President. I will enjoy listening to the rest of your meeting.
Muted. Sorry, I'm out of practice of Zoom meetings. Thank you very much, and I'm glad we could save you the drive by going on Zoom. Are there any questions for Gully? We really appreciate the letter that you sent. It's good to be informed on what's happening with BOSI's. Okay, if there are no questions, I'm going to move on to the rest of public comment. If you would like to make a couple of public comment, can you put your name in the chat? I know that Ruby has already requested, so I'm going to start with Ruby. And Ruby, I just want to let you know that we have a four-minute time limit on public comment. So hopefully, that's enough time for you.
Can I go?
Yep.
Okay. So my name's Ruby Martin. I'm in Ronbault Middle School, and I think that all kids should be able to ride the bus because I live in a miles' reach of the school, but the only problem is, in the wintertime, it gets really cold and it gets sometimes dangerous to walk to school because there's like ice everywhere, and my friend has already slipped three times trying to go to school, and she actually sprained her ankle and hurt her knee, so it's like pretty dangerous. Then my mom can't always drive me to school because she has another child that she has to bring to Glennum, which is a lot farther away from where we live right now, since he got like some special thing. So he is like going all the way to Glennum, and it's harder for her to drive him to Glennum when she also has to drive me to school so that I don't have to walk to school. It's a few of my other friends also live in a miles' reach, but it's not all flat land, and she has to walk up many hills to get to the school, which takes a lot of extra time, and it's really hard with the cold weather. And I love like, I love walking to school. I really don't mind walking to school, riding my bike even. It's just in the wintertime, it gets really hard to walk to school in cold weather and since it being it like so dangerous. I see buses drive by my house all the time. I just don't get why. And there's like tons of bus stops that I guess my school doesn't go to, but I know that like my brother's school, they go to the bus stop that's like just down the street from me, and the buses at my school don't do that. So if we could like have a way to change up the route because it's just a lot easier if we were able to have more like either more buses or just like was able to like I could always walk to a nearby bus stop, just like like a little bit farther down the road, but it's easier when there's a bus stop available that the buses for my school isn't going to. So some, yeah, and my other friend, her mom has to like walk her to school every single day and because they don't have a car, and she lives too close to the school to take the bus. So it's a little bit unfair that she has to walk to school every day with her mom when like her mom has work and her mom has another child. So it is, it's a bit hard. I'm a part of the student council, so I could try to talk to them if they could do anything, but I think that's all I have to say. So.
Yeah. Thank you. And you were very smart to come to the board because this is where decisions like that are made and and it's budget season, so we are talking about things like that. I really appreciate you doing it. I don't know, Matt, if you wanted to say anything.
Sure. Ruby, thanks for coming, and Mr. Saltish actually talked to us about, I think you may have talked to him during his because he talked to us about it as well. Mr. Saltish has actually talked to us about expanding bus routes for the last year or two. It would be a pretty significant change for us in the district. And one of the issues we have right now is being able to maintain the bus routes that we're just doing currently. But that being said, it's an idea that, you know, other people have had too. And Mr. Saltish has talked to us about it even before you brought it up, and then he talked to us again about it. So we will review it and see if there can be a change for next year in the budget process. So we'll be working on over the next probably a few months until April.
And Ruby, I just wanted to add, if there are spots during your walk that you feel could be made safer while you are walking, please let us know because maybe we can be in touch with the city, you know, if there's some, if there's a sidewalk that's not being plowed or a cross that needs a crossing guard. You know, if we can't solve the problem through buses, maybe we can make it an easier walk. And we can't change the weather, but maybe there are some other things we can make better about it. Thank you very much for speaking up. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the rest of the agenda. We have two workshops tonight. We have a report from Glennum Elementary and JB Forrestal. I guess we're going to start with, well, at least in list, it's Glennum going first. Is that okay, Cassandra? Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I think you should be able to see my screen at this point in time. I thought a great way to start off the presentation was how we started our school year, and that is focusing on our positive Glennum family. So we are the Glennum Tigers. The building leadership team had everybody in the building, faculty, staff, students, custodian, clerical, have a tiger paw, and on the tiger paw, they listed out four to five character traits that describe you or make you unique, and they are all in the front entryway of the school along the bulletin board and along the main office windows for everybody to see. So that was just sort of a way to connect everybody, but also recognize everybody as being unique. And it was a fun little activity to start the year and to brighten the hallways as you enter the building. Oh, there we go. Okay. So, speaking to the excellence goal, one of the key points is exemplary curriculum. So sort of similar to some of the conversations that we've had in the past is there is a focus on creating meaningful experiences that focus on student learning. Some of those experience involve common ground or author visits. We definitely have tried to do some more STEM activities in the classrooms, and that's what I focused on in these photographs. You can see Mr. Werba with some dry ice in third grade, doing a fun experiment with the students. There is a student there making a house for the three little pigs. Ms. Peterson in library who was teaching about bridges and the different structural bridges, and students created bridges in a group, and then they tested them to see how much weight they could hold. And then that was a hands-on project in fourth grade in the top right. So obviously, a big focus of incorporating STEM not only into the classroom but into library media and some of the other different experiences. We did do a trip to Bear Mountain Zoo. We, because of COVID, started doing some walking trips, which there's not a whole lot by Glennum, but we were able to find a nice little park that we could walk to. It's close by. We brought snacks with us and did a scavenger hunt, an environmental scavenger hunt. So that was a lot of fun for the students and something, you know, to get them outside and into nature. And then we do also have a field trip scheduled for Sharp with first grade where we're learning about maple sugaring, so that's exciting. We also, you know, with fifth grade, we have a dude ranch trip planned as their big end of elementary school trip, and you know, we're starting to talk about planning Sharp for the spring. So there's lots of different experiences that we're trying to incorporate. Speaking to teacher supports, thank you to Mrs. O'Neill. We have iReady in full swing. We've done two assessments now at the elementary level, and that has been instrumental in providing us with math assessment data, which has been difficult to collect from a standardized measure for a while now. So we do have a great way of collecting the math data and comparing, you know, growth from the beginning of the year throughout the year, and then also ELA data as well, and then creating activities for both interventions and explicit instruction through iReady. So that has been a great tool for the teachers, especially with the students coming back from COVID, some being fully remote last year. It's given us a nice way to really see where students are and then have individualized instruction for them. At Glennum, I'm very fortunate to have a reading T I who is a tech and data guru. She loves, loves, loves data. So she has been really helpful working with individual teachers. Well, instead of like a grade level meeting monthly, we'll meet with teachers and we'll review their Funtis and Pennell assessments, make sure that they're being done appropriately, taking a look at the goals that are being set for students to make sure it's based on their instructional levels. So that has been, you know, in full swing now that we have the Funtis and Pennell assessment data from January. Foundations, again, Mrs. O'Neill had put out to faculty and staff that foundations training would be available. I've been at Glennum now for six years, and I can't remember the last time the faculty was trained on foundations. So I definitely think a refresher would be beneficial just to ensure that there is fidelity in the implementation of foundations and early reading. So pre-K to two teachers at Glennum are all signed up to attend in the upcoming months. And then one of the other points that we noticed, looking at some of the reading data and where students were struggling the most through our data meetings was in phonological awareness. So we did start an explicit instruction on phonological awareness through the Hegarty program in pre-K to two, but we do have some third and fourth grade classes using it sporadically to explicitly teach phonological awareness, and it's multisensory, and it's really like a 10-minute quick and fun activity for students. So all of this data collection and curriculum pieces are really to support students at the building level and to set goals, you know, from an individual student basis. Another point of excellence is supporting supportive culture. So for Glennum, it is definitely a special place for me, but one of the things that we focus on is a monthly character trait. So just teaching students about the different character traits. For the month of February, the character trait is courage. So you'll hear throughout this that we utilize our morning news show for a lot of things. One of them is to teach about the character traits. And also, our student council has been instrumental in in assisting with this. So we do have a little calendar each month, and each day on the calendar is connected to the character trait, and it's a quick and simple activity that students can do. And we do have a committee in the building who organizes that. We are still doing our kindness is contagious certificates, and that's just catching a student who's doing something, you know, I had a, one of the bigger kids coming in, noticed one of the little kids was like lost or needed something on the way to class and helped him along, and it was, he went out of his way. He didn't go straight to his classroom because he was helping the students at class. So it was just a nice way to catch him doing something extra special and kind. Girls on the Run is, we had it in the fall. We're going to have it again in the spring, and there is a huge character component to that. So a lot of the girls in that will do community activities, fundraising. I know they've collected for some of the animal shelters and things like that. And then a continuation of the Glennum Tiger Kindness Pledge. I did link, in case anyone was interested, the, a sample of the morning news. That was the morning news for February 1st, so it's kind of a long one because it's the beginning of the month. And it does introduce Black History Month, its celebration of Lunar New Year. And then one of the other things that I had to mention about the morning news show, just to make it fun for students, is we started a TikTok Tuesday to try to connect with students in a fun way, and we've been including like cute and funny animal videos. There was a little raccoon that couldn't get a marshmallow off like somebody's back porch, and the kids were talking about it all day long. They absolutely loved it. So we started incorporating that this month. Moving on to equity and celebration of diversity. The dignity team has been working throughout the year on different projects. You can see one of them there, and that actually is a project that originated in kindergarten. So those are the handprints of two of our kindergarten classes on the hallway. And if you walk around Glennum, more and more are going up outside of classrooms, and it's just, you can read, it says, we are all different, and that's beautiful. So different teachers put up different quotes to go along with the handprints of the students from their class, but it's a way to recognize and celebrate the differences of the students in the classroom. Some of the other things the dignity team has been working on is inclusive literature read alouds. And again, this is something that we make sure we include all members of the school. So we have Mr. Wilkins, our security guard, and Mr. Tom, our custodian. We've had the kitchen workers, teachers, TAs, anyone you can think of in the school come in to read some of a book. So we started this during COVID, and it has really been enjoyed by students. So we continued to purchase new and exciting inclusive books. So we started this year with Change Things, and we did that as a full staff read aloud. And we do it virtually and then send it out to the teachers with some like helpful links on ways to have conversations around the topics of the book. We also recorded The Many Colors of Harpreet Singh. And then our most recent book that we recorded is A Sled for Gabo. So it's just ways to teach students about different cultures or different ways of life, maybe students who have less or students who, you know, just are living or have different experiences than what we're maybe familiar with. We also, I think it was two years ago, we did the Family Connection Celebration, and students were able to, on a large piece of paper, draw who made up their family, who, what was their family, and it could be anybody at all that you think of who's your family, and we like to decorate the walls. Glennum, we have lots and lots of things hanging up. So that is going to be our next hallway decoration is all the Glennum families, and to see the pictures from kindergarten up is really a beautiful thing. So to continue with that, teaching, learning, and celebrating differences between students and families at the building level and within the curriculum is a continual focus. We have a student, and he's now in fifth grade this year, but every year we recognize alopecia awareness because he was born with alopecia. We have a sibling of one of our students who has heart disease, so we always are in contact with that family, and we make sure during February, Heart Health Month, that we recognize him. And and even if it's just, you know, we were in February, we're wearing the color red on Fridays to recognize heart health and the importance of heart health, and we incorporate a segment on the morning news. It's just a nice way to recognize the different families and the differences in the building for the community, I should say. Moving on to a culture of care, safe and supportive emotional environment. This year at Glennum, we did change the special area schedule a little bit to allow for a nice amount of time in the morning. That would allow all classes to have morning meeting time before going out to specials. It was really important with the change in coming back to in-person and students coming from, you know, all different models of learning last year to have that time in the morning to connect with their class and connect with their teachers before going out for the day to specials or, you know, learning. So that has been, I think, instrumental in the social, emotional, and really just wellness piece in the morning. The picture here is of students doing a team builder challenge in third grade, and they had to work together without talking to put each other in height order. So that was just a fun little activity, quick and simple in the morning, gets them up and moving and connected as a class. One of the other things that's been very helpful this year, you can see in this picture, Ms. Rin and Ms. Donegan, those are the OTs who work at Glennum. They have gone around to the different classrooms and taught the students about the zones of regulation. If you're not familiar, the zones of regulation is a concept that helps students self-regulate, and it creates a way for them to categorize how they're feeling, their body feels or their emotions feel, and then put those feelings into four different zones, which correlate with a color. So they might be in the red zone, and you know, they work to get back to the green, and there's different things that you can do to try to help yourself get back to the green. Some simple things could be breathing. You know, the OTs spoke about different scents like cinnamon or like menthol, like Vicks Vapor Rub, and they taught students, I mean, it could be simple, like just put your hands on your head, and that helps ground you. So they've gone around to a lot of the classes at Glennum. I don't think they've hit every class yet, but we do have, you know, the signage around the school of the zones of regulation as a reminder. We've been using that you know, throughout the day with a lot of different students trying to help and support them to get into the green zone or stay in the green zone. Also, you can see in the OT room, that's a student using the crash pad, which is a lot of fun. So we do have movement breaks throughout the day for students who might need it, who can go to the OT room. And then we also have visuals throughout the building. There's some marker dots you can see on the floor in these pictures, and there's a little sign that goes with it, and those are just different stations for movement breaks. So if we're sending a student on a walk, they can pick, you know, go pick three dots and do them, and then come back, and it helps to regulate them or center them to help get them ready for learning. So you can see there's a student doing wall push-ups, and then there's another student doing yoga poses, but there's different stations throughout the building to support the emotional environment and help students prepare for learning. One of the other things that I thought was important to include was the focus on creating fun ways to continue traditions and also start new traditions because with COVID, we've had to change things up, but try, try our best to incorporate what we can. So you can see in the one picture there, we did have band and chorus hallway caroling. So it was a nice way to continue that without gathering the entire school into the multipurpose room. We have been focusing on getting students outside as much as possible. So games that you would typically see played in the gym are now being played outside. We have students, once again, coming to the principal's office in a positive way. So students are often coming up to share with me their great work and get a sticker. And then I had to include a picture of the dress-up day parade because the kids at Glennum love that, and we're super excited to do that again this year. Some of the other things, the use of the outdoors has been really helpful with snack time with the confines of the classroom and spacing. So it's been really great to get kids outside for snack and also for lunch. And then I have a nice little picture there of C.T., who's the kitchen manager at Glennum, and she has put breakfast on a cart, and we have probably doubled, maybe tripled, the number of students who are having breakfast at school in the morning because it's a grab and go. They bring it right to their classroom, and she is very, you can see from her cart, very welcoming and very excited to feed the students. So that has been a nice change from COVID. Communication and outreach. So some of these things are similar to the past. Some of them, it was just nice to have again. So we have Fire Prevention Day. You can see that was on the pre-K to two side. We have the students outside for Fire Prevention Day, which was new. But we did have, I think, five or six fire companies and B.V.A.C., and it was wonderful to have our fire truck parade again and let the students climb in the fire trucks and try on the helmets. So it was very, it was a very normal day again, which was a wonderful thing. We also have been, still, we still have been communicating or collaborating with community organizations like Planned Parenthood for the puberty presentations, and Grace Smith House has a, I was working with Mr. Keeley on internet safety presentations for some of the upper grades. And then the town of Fishkill is also reintroducing a DARE program. So Officer Kelly is working with Glennum, and she has come over to meet some of our fifth graders. And I was very excited to hear that DARE is not what it was when I was in school and very much different in the sense that it teaches students how to make positive choices, how to make connections in your community, how to say no to peer pressure or go to the appropriate people if you need help. There is also a component on internet safety and There is also a component on internet safety and cyber safety. So it sounds like, and, and she's going to share the curriculum with me ahead of time. But it sounds like it's, it's really have, it's been revamped for the good. And I'm excited to participate with the Town of Fishkill Police Department on that. I should also mention, we worked with them on a fundraiser for Sparrow's Nest. And raised quite a bit of money for Sparrow's Nest with, with the police department. So that was a nice connection with the community as well. One of the fun things that we are now doing every year is our Boosterthon fundraiser. And the students love it, everybody. I mean, it was a little bit chilly this year because I think we did it in November. But to get the kids outside and running laps and dancing and jumping up and down and running backwards and doing all sorts of silly things as they do laps around the backfield. It's a simple fundraiser and it gets kids moving and outside. So that is a great experience. They love doing it every year. And then we also have our color run planned for spring again. So it's, it's wonderful. The PTO has continued to focus on activities that are getting students moving and also they are fundraisers. So it's nice. We have a nice little picture there of our outdoor classroom. That's a music class they were singing that day in the fall. So it was, it's a nice location. We have kids who go out to that tent area for lunch and for snack. And at all times, right now, our canopy is down for the winter, but we look forward to the spring when we can use it again. And then to speak to garden club, it is quite a bigger club this year. And student council has been working with our garden club quite a bit. Student council is going around and teaching the classes about recycling. We're hoping to really increase the amount that we're recycling at Glenham. The student council is also collecting recyclables on Friday and they are doing a news clip each week. That's the recycling tip of the week for students. And that's all I have. I have not been great on Twitter this year, like I have in years past, but I'm, I have lots of pictures. I'm just hoping to get back to, to my social media game.
Well, it looks like you've been really busy with a lot of other great stuff. So you're forgiven for not getting into social media. Are there any questions for Cassandra?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Andrea, sorcerer, thanks so much. I wanted to ask, you did say, you sort of mentioned that there are some things that were kind of innovations from COVID that you're planning on, you know, keeping with, with the breakfast cart be one of those things?
Yeah, definitely. Only because we've increased the amount of students that we're feeding each morning. And some of them are having second breakfast, which is fine. But it's so great to, I mean, they come in and it's, it's so well organized and it gets them right to their classroom in the morning. They can eat breakfast while they're doing their morning work or in morning meetings. So it's been really wonderful. So that was actually a conversation I had with Mrs. Pagano at the beginning of the year. Because I know some schools were opting to go, you know, back to the cafeteria in the morning. And I really love the breakfast cart just because of our, our numbers increasing so much and feeding so many students.
And what about, I just wanted to know if you could speak to, if you'll continue to do that extended responsive classroom first thing in the morning? And if you've noticed, if anyone's commented or observed any changes in how the students function during the day or anything that's come out of that?
Sure. So Mrs. O'Neil and I and, and some of the elementary principals have had a conversation about aligning our special area schedules. And, and hopefully all moving to something like that. Coming into this year was a little bit chaotic and I made that decision a little bit late. So it just made it a little more chaotic. But I wanted to have that time. I was so, I, I don't want to say I was worried, but I, I would feel a lot, I would feel a lot more comfortable with students coming in in the morning and not rushing out of their classrooms. I wanted them to have the opportunity to connect as soon as they got to school. So in some cases, you know, if specials were starting at nine or nine, 10, sometimes students aren't walking in the door until nine. They'd be there for 10 minutes, drop their stuff and go where this gives the opportunity for them to really, you know, unpack, settle in, maybe have breakfast and have their morning meeting before moving on with the day.
And has there been, has anyone observed any changes in like regulation through the classroom or the classroom working together or reduction in anything like?
I feel like that is natural with responsive classroom. I think we see a lot less behaviors or we see more concerns being brought up right away in the day that we can address. If you have a student who's coming in dysregulated, you're, you're going to know in morning meeting, you're, you know, you're able to, to reach out and say, hey, you know, I need help, I need help in whatever classroom, I might need support throughout the day. Or maybe the student needs a break to the OT room or whatever it might be, because you're able to have that conversation first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I have is, do you picture continuing to use the outdoor spaces as much going forward?
Definitely. I had some classrooms, I think it was 40 degrees and they were going outside for lunch. I had parents calling saying, can you please let my child eat inside? It's very cold out today. I'm, I'm okay either way. If they want to eat outside, they can. But definitely the outdoor spaces, getting those picnic tables. I mean, prior to the picnic tables, kids were bringing in beach towels and they were opting to sit outside and picnic rather than sitting in the cafeteria. So it definitely, on nice sunny days, we have the perfect location. It's a beautiful lunch. I definitely think we'll continue with that.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Cassandra. I'd like to know more about your STEM activities at the school.
Sure. So a lot of the teachers like the, like pictured, they did a unit on the three little pigs. And there's lots of different stories about the three little pigs. So they incorporated a liter, a literature piece. And then at the end of it, allowed students to choose materials. I think, I think that particular lesson, they had like a set number of items that they could choose. And they had to be strategic about what they chose. They had to plan it out. And then they created, they created the house for the three little pigs. And then it was Ms. Sylvester's class. So she, she huffed and puffed to blow the house down. And she used like this giant fan to test the houses to see if they were, you know, stable enough to protect the three little pigs. So that was obviously a second grade activity. It's very different when you're learning about the different types of bridges and library. That connects with the, it connects with a couple of different parts of the curriculum, but some of it is New York State. Because we could speak to the different types of bridges. And I can't honestly tell you, I know there was like a trust bridge, maybe. It's not my forte. But with that lesson taught about the different shapes and bridges. And I, I don't really, I can't speak to the actual engineering piece of it. But what they did is they worked as a group and it was, it was very similar where they had a set number of materials. And they had to work together as a team to come up with a plan. They also, because they were upper, an upper grade, they were given a budget and each item costs a certain amount. And then she used like these cylindrical weights to test to see how much weight each bridge could hold for each group. And that was actually, for me, that was really fun to watch because you, you see the different dynamics of students. So one of the groups, one of the students right away took over and was like, this is how we're going to do it. And we're going to do this and we're going to do this. And then you, you started to hear the conversations of their thinking and trying to convince one another, like why we should do it a certain way. What shape was going to be stronger? And we, you know, let's go back to what we learned with Ms. Peterson and how we should do this. So it was a fun activity for them to watch. But outside of library, live, Mrs. Peterson, our library media specialist, is very interested in different STEM activities. And she also has lightbulb lab that allows the students in smaller groups from each grade level come down at different parts of the school year. She has it set in her schedule so that she has these times for them to come down to the library. And they really have an opportunity, they could do like a, a research project or they could use some of the different manipulatives that she has in the library. And then besides that, just trying to incorporate fun, you know, fun hands out. For me, it's fun because I'm a science person, but hands-on activities into the regular curriculum to, you know, to support what they're teaching in ELA or what they're teaching in math. So, but I definitely think each year there's, the teachers really work to, to change up what they're doing and, and try different things. I know I don't know that this is necessarily STEM related, but second grade is reading the chocolate touch. And when I was in there the other day, they were talking about different types of chocolate. And they were going to melt the chocolate and to see which, which chocolate melts fastest. There is dark chocolate or there's milk chocolate or there's white chocolate. So of course it was first about like, who likes what kind of chocolate? And what do you like to eat your chocolate with? And then it, it led into a different conversation of, you know, which chocolate melts the fastest or something. And then they were talking, you know, that I think towards the end of the book, they might do like chocolate fondue with melting chocolate. So it's most of the time, especially at the elementary level, it's just fun ways of including science.
Does anyone else have any questions for Cassandra? Thank you so much. Sounds, sounds like there's a lot of great stuff going on over there.
Thank you all.
Crystal, you ready?
Yep, thank you. Just going to give it a minute so I can transition to share my screen. Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal. I have the pleasure and honor of serving as principal at JV Forestville Elementary School. I just want to make sure that this is loaded and there's not a tech glitch. Okay. Believe my screen is now shared.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, perfect. So this is a year that I like to refer to as the bounce back year. There has been a lot of learning through the past couple of years due to the pandemic. And it's really has forced us to, like it has already been mentioned, do new things and be innovative and problem solve. And really just rise to the occasion of the different challenges that have been brought forward. So I like to really highlight the bounce back and focus on what we learned from the past unprecedented school years and how we're responding. Moving forward, continuing to celebrate our students and our school community and what you can look forward to as we continue through this school year and build on opportunities for next year. Through the pandemic and just in general, I really believe that the past couple of years and going into this year, it has put equity under a microscope. And through that, I believe our school community has shown just the power of resilience, the importance of empathy and the strength within our community. We were forced to really take a closer look at who our school community members are and how we're best serving them and how we're working together to meet the needs of our students. So I chose the images here just to kind of acknowledge and remind myself and all of us of the wonderful staff that we have in place to support our students. And it has really been a true testament of their diligence and dedication that we're, where we are with Dr. Landell's leadership and the ability to stay open and respond to the challenge of being remote last year and then transitioning into this year with, again, the unexpected of still facing challenges with pandemic, but doing what we can to celebrate our students and remain resilient. We continue to align our work to the Board of Ed goals and really have focused a lot on the care, connecting and engagement piece. We're reminded now more than ever, the power of relationships and building that within our school community to support and engage kids in meaningful learning experiences. So some of that I like to highlight really has to do a lot with the social, emotional support that are in place for students. We're mindful also of the emotional, mental health needs of staff. Ensuring time and opportunities to reflect and engage in our practices as a school community to use data to inform our next steps. So the data team meetings, thanks to Sagrario, we have the I Ready assessments in place and those have really been helpful. As it has been mentioned, the second round of assessments have been done. And so teachers have that to use as means to determine where students are now, what's in place, what challenges they're facing and how to make adjustments and work together with this universal assessment in place to identify goals and to work towards those goals with students. Share that data with colleagues, get feedback from myself and to, to work together accordingly to not just set the goals and respond to the challenges of where students may have lacked, but to also really use the data to push us and to be innovative and to build collective teacher efficacy, like believing in the power of working together and working towards a, a common goal. And we've seen just the importance of celebrating our students and the progress that they've been making and how they've been able to be resilient. That brings me to how it manifests and relates to the work around equity and culture of care. Specifically, building on the work that has been in place through responsive classroom and focusing on building community through positive behavior and relationships. It's been great to see just even from our youngest students in pre-K to kindergarten to fifth grade, have that time to connect, be it through morning meeting or reflective teachers, through share out and the greeting. All of those things really help to do what I like to refer to as the heart work. Some of that includes ensuring that all students are welcomed and there's a sense of belonging. Building community through positive behavior and relationships. Learning from the past and using those lessons to inform future practice. Affirming and celebrating our students and the many parts that make up who they are. Lifting and listening to student voice. And this one is a big one for me. It's really highlighting the S in the PTSO. And one example, our student council presented at one of the PTSO meetings. More recently, the student council has what's called Thankful Thursdays in place. And so there are hearts in the lobby where students can, anyone of this, anyone within the school community really can pick a heart, identify someone that they want to express thanks to and then deliver it to them on a thankful Thursday. This came about through the work of our students and student council with the support and leadership of the student council staff members, Ms. Jinggol and Ms. Kathy Pezzo. Thanks for them and how they've supported our students and their ideas and bringing that to life. Also, as it relates to equity and culture of care, I think that directly ties into excellence and communication. Some examples include the zones of regulation where our students are building self-awareness and communication. Our social worker has supported with that. And then also instructionally encouraging our students to become their teacher in their instructional experiences where they are demonstrating excellence through mastery. There are opportunities for students to engage in peer-to-peer reflection, study, collaborate, student-led class discussions, building on these experiences for students to also self-assess. Building on these experiences for students to also self-assess. Um, I was able to see and celebrate. Even our kindergarten students who were engaged in what's called accountability check. And the students were using an accountability board to go through the classroom, kind of self-check where they were uh while engaged in a task. What they needed to work on, working and conferencing with the teacher on their goal and. Engaging them from early on with reflecting on um, their learning and how they can play an active role in that. Communication and collaboration with all stakeholders. Um, it's really helped to build positive rapport. Uh, maximizing connections across our community and viewing parents as partners. Empowering teachers and encouraging them um, while really working from a place of excellence and also growth. Mindset, working as a team and growing in our leadership has helped to model and support staff. To truly build collective teacher efficacy and really um. Work from a place of empowerment to grow professionally, support students and. Maintain our parent partnerships and viewing parents as partners. As it relates to sustainability, some of the programs that we have in place that I want to highlight um include land to learn. Accessing the outdoor classroom spaces. Our P T S O has really been a huge help with creatively. Coming up with ways to have students be able to access the outdoors more. We had uh tree stumps painted and donated to use for seating outside. And so that has been. Great students access that in the fall and also towards the end of last year, really spent more time outdoors, even in learning in learning opportunities. New this year, we have the pollinator garden in place. Again, that was a P T S O collaboration. And the pollinator garden is um, separate from the garden that was already, that's already on campus from land to learn. But um, planting flowers that predominantly bring and provide uh nectar pollen for a wide range of pollinating insects. And so I thought that. This was a good way to share and connect um, the eco-friendly lesson in learning and engagement that students can experience. We also have um, the bee study in Stony Hill Farm Connection, Crayola Collection. And new this year too, we're excited about. The little free library that's going to be built and placed um, outside of our kindergarten entrance. That's going to be exciting and it's a way to support um. The sustainability as it relates to eco-friendly efforts. Um, we do have other programs in place and I think that the way that this connects. And what I see celebrated here is how we're continuing to build on the skills and attributes noted in. The strategic plan and really growing creative thinkers and problem solvers and collaborators, curious learners. Um, celebrating our students and affirming who they are. Related to our equity and culture of care work. We're excited, especially being in and going into Black History Month for our fourth annual Black History Month Studies. Our equity team worked this year to focus on local trailblazers. And so. Each grade level in class is going to research and study a local trail, trailblazer. They're going to put together. Um, a piece to place outside of the classroom. And at the end of the month, we're going to celebrate as a school and do a gallery walk. We not only celebrate. Our learning, but also recognize those folks that were studied. We um, have people who are being researched and that our classes are connecting with from um, local folks. As local as um Larry Collins, um, John Galloway Jr., a member of the board. Um. We have Jane Bolin, who was, you can see her picture um, in every school building and she comes from a family of three generations of. Um, African Americans who have made historical impact within the realm of um, justice and. They um, are being studied by one of our, I think, one of our first grade classes. And so that's going to be exciting. Outside of local folks, people are um, classes are focusing on people from New York State. Because it was hard to kind of build a list of folks just from Beacon, Poughkeepsie, Dutchess County. So we did broaden it and we do have some. Classes are studying individuals from New York State. And when I think about some of the work that's in place between the equity team. And uh, their work and how we're celebrating students and lifting student voice through student council. There's a quote that resonates with me and um, it's pictured here. Tell me and I'll forget. Teach me and I'll remember, involve me and I will learn. Um, you'll see in this corner here, just. Students working together collaboratively in a lesson in first grade. Where they have the opportunity to show their thinking. They were working on number bonds and. The students then have the opportunity to teach it to another classmate. Involving them actively in their learning process and celebrating their progress and putting them on the stage and giving them the. Wheel, right? And the, and the being in the driving seat of their learning. Approaching everything from a growth mindset, changing our um, heart posture and our thinking from. Um, you know, I can't to I can and we can, I can and you know, I will and we will. Encouraging folks to make the shift to think positively. Embrace challenge, grow our brains and even persevere when we're faced with challenge. I think that that has been a highlight just not only from this year, but over the past couple of years. How we're able to demonstrate how we're moving forward, even in the face of difficulties and showing our resilience. I thank you all for being on this learning, learning journey with us and I look forward to our growth, our learning and our celebration over the next. Couple of months as we close this school year and as we prepare for what's ahead.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Crystal? I I am, I actually just wanted to ask, it was, I was glad to hear um, both. Let him and Forrest will talk about the zones of regulation. And I'm wondering, it sounds like responsive classroom has also sort of gone. Uh, schoolwide at the elementary level. Is that true for JBF?
Yes, we still have responsive classroom in place and um. With the current schedule, the students and teachers still engage in morning meeting. Um, some do also closing circle at the end of the day and that has really helped to build classroom community. Um, what's nice this year, building off of um, what we had in place last year. Students in our MAPS program also get to integrate and experience and participate in morning meeting with their Janet peers as well. And so. That has been wonderful to see those friendships and those relationships grow.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Crystal, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I also would like to know about the STEM activities at JV Forstle.
Yeah, so um, some of the STEM activities, um, you can see taking place in our classroom. I recently. Had the opportunity in our fifth grade classroom, they were learning about the Winter Olympics and the teacher was leading a lesson. Where the students build their own bobsleds um, with everyday materials and together. Had to use a rubric to pick and choose which bobsled would go the fastest. And then test it out. And um, that was pretty, pretty cool to to watch and see. And not only did they get to engage in that hands-on learning, but they also then had to back up their. Prediction about which bobsled would go the fastest with evidence from the rubric and backing it up with what they learned about. Bobs sledding in actuality and how that plays out during the Winter Olympics. Um, we have our students, I believe, third, fourth and fifth grade currently working on a project. Um, they may have finished in library media. And engaging with uh, the Tinker CAD program and working with the 3D printing. So they're doing a project with. Our library and media specialist and all students are making bookmarks um, in doing so. In a very way where I was just like taken back by their, their work and their ability to. Navigate the Tinker CAD program and then furthermore complete and produce these awesome bookmarks with the 3D printer. Our library media specialist, I'm sorry, Anthony also um, has built an open maker space time and flex time in her schedule. So students can. Sign up um, for certain times where they can participate in open maker spaces with her in the library. Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna ask about the maker stuff.
I am, I just want to ask the same question that I asked uh, Mrs. Orser, which is. Are there any adaptations that you've made during COVID that you see carrying forward?
Yes, so um, the change with the breakfast as well, we've had the breakfast cart grab and go in place since last year. That brought about um, an increase in students. It's like they, their own little. Kind of business to their day. Like they come in the morning, they look forward to go into the breakfast cart, getting their breakfast, they chat while they're online there. And so. Yes, I see that as one of the adaptations to continue as well as outdoor learning spaces, growing that um, opportunity. And like I said, the, the pandemic, although there were challenges, it really helped to push us to see what we can do. In innovative ways and. You see that it has turned out for the benefit of our students. And so that's been, that's been great to see and I would love to see that continue.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal, Cassandra.
Um, okay, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? And to discuss matters made exempt by federal or state law, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And the board will return in about a half hour.
Okay, second.
Kristen first, Anthony with second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes nine to zero. Okay, thank you for your patience. Um. Reviewing the agenda, we do have one addition to the consent agenda. It will be eleven point one seven. And I will read it now. Um, resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District hereby affirms the superintendent's decision. And suspension, uh, actually, there's no student number here. Can we? Can we get that to put on the agenda?
The date, today's date.
For the student number? Um, okay, so superintendent's decision and suspension of student number uh, oh two, oh seven, two oh two two. Issued pursuant to an edu, to an education law, three, two, one. Section three, two, one, four, superintendent's hearing and further authorizes the board to inform the parents of student number. Oh, two, oh seven, two, oh two, two of its decision. Are there any parent groups or student school presentations that would like to present? Seeing none. Uh, Matt, superintendent's report.
Hey, um, thank you, Meredith. I just have a, a couple of quick updates. Um, so one is just on the communication front. We have a, a new. Issue of the Bulldog Bulletin coming out tomorrow. Uh, we, we got a couple of weeks behind January. Uh, Jan, January was a challenging month. Uh, for a lot of different reasons, but we have the, the February issue of the Bulldog Bulletin coming out. So we're now going to kind of. Change it over to, it's going to go out at the beginning uh, of a month. And so we're really excited to get that out. Uh, we made some shifts to upcoming board meetings, so I just wanted to update you all. Uh, we're going to start our budget workshops and presentations at the next meeting. We'll have technology and athletics. Uh, do theirs and we'll have our last school presentation, Sergeant Elementary, Brian Archer will be presenting. Uh, and then we'll work our way through the different department uh, for uh, the budget um, in February and March. And at the first meeting in March, uh, March seventh, uh, Saggy is going to do a presentation on um. Kind of pulling together all the data that we have collected, uh, especially with uh. With the new assessment program we're using, but also uh, some other um, information to put it in perspective. So we're, we're going to have a lot of action-packed meetings coming up. So we're excited uh, to be moving forward with that. Uh, another thing uh, that we're moving forward with and I'll do uh, at the next uh, February twenty second meeting, I'll do a little bit more of a formal. Intro into this during the superintendent report, but we are um, kind of launching strategic planning. Two point O. So we did a strategic planning process uh, three years ago. And we're working with the Dutch Dispostise to kind of take what we developed three years ago. And uh, help us make it into a long-range actionable plan for the district. There'll be a stakeholder group and an advisory group and lots of ways for people to give input into the process. So uh, we're really excited to get that going as well. We had a kind of an internal kickoff meeting. Last week and we're going to be rolling that out in the coming weeks. Uh, and then finally, just I've always taken an opportunity to do kind of quick COVID updates. Uh, like everywhere else, we have seen a significant drop in cases, especially the last. Seven to ten days. So uh, I'll be moving to just doing a weekly case update. Uh, we'll, we'll keep updating the state dashboard uh, on a daily basis as required, but I'll now do a weekly case update. Uh. Um, we'll put it out on Fridays, uh, instead of it being a daily thing. Uh, we have a uh, vaccine clinic. Tomorrow at B H S, four thirty to sixty. Uh, if, if. I don't want to say it will be our last, last one, but it is going to be our last one for probably quite some time. Um, we've had a lot of them and so uh, so we, we want to take a little break from it as well, but thanks to all the. Volunteers who've made that possible uh, over, over the last almost year now that we've been having them. And then lastly, uh, in the news today, several of our neighboring states. Um, all doing it slightly differently, I think, uh, from what I'm gathering, but uh, New Jersey, Connecticut. I guess Delaware doesn't quite count as neighboring state, but they're on the East Coast. Uh, those governors have all announced uh, it somewhere in the future. Uh, an end to a statewide mask mandate in schools. Uh, Governor Hokel spoke, I guess, a little bit about it. I, I, I. Did not watch the press conference, um, but she said that they are working on providing an update uh, to the, you know, to the state. Uh, soon on where things stand with that. Uh, so we're all kind of um. You know, anticipating uh, the next steps with that and trying to be prepared. Um, but I think when most of the neighboring states start moving in this direction, it's probably likely on some level. Um, that it becomes a more optional thing in New York, probably before the end of the school year. Um, so you know, we'll be, I'm sure it'll make news when it happens, but we'll be updating the community about. You know, what our thoughts are about that um, when that happens from the governor's office. Uh, so those are all my updates. Thanks, Meredith.
Thank you, Matt. Um, such great timing on. Bringing the strategic uh, planning back. I sent the board an email today, a, a short podcast from NISBA about. Connecting the strategic plan to the budget and sort of really making those things uh, work together. So. I'm glad you're talking about it again. Uh, committee reports and word comments. Let's start with Craig.
Okay, I, I have no committee comments at the moment. Um, I do have an idea though. We had a change of plan for tonight's meeting. Going to Zoom and of course, from time to time, we do have changes that are necessitated by weather. Or anything else. Um, it occurred to me that as a backup, it would be very helpful. If we had texting uh, to indicate any of these late changes. Uh, it's not always possible to be on a machine that gives me good access to email. Um, and but I almost always get the texts. So just a thought.
Did you get my text today, Craig?
No, I don't think I did.
Oh, because I, I did um, I did text everybody because I was, yeah, and you're on it. Um.
Okay, well.
Because.
I'll have to check.
I know that, yeah, you're not always checking your email every five minutes like most of us, so. I did text.
Thank you.
I'm glad you got the memo.
Yep.
Thanks, Anthony. Anthony saying?
Oh, all right.
Good evening. The diversity subgroup on inclusive learning environment and the curriculum met earlier today. I want to thank Saraglio and Jalissa's work on the inclusive learning environment. And Saraglio's work on the curriculum working group. The working group right now is in the early stages of identifying groups of students that would, would be the would be where the work groups is try to make recommendations for changes so that they're so that they're, they're inclusive or addressed in the correct, with the critical needs are addressed. And, you know, Saraglio, feel free to clarify or correct me on any of that.
No, you got it. We are. We spent some time today really identifying groups that we feel are underrepresented or marginalized within our curriculum as well as within our, our, our district. So we spent some time kind of unpacking that and trying to brainstorm a little bit as to how we're going to start addressing some of these inequities and disparities within those groups.
Thank you, Saraglio. That's all I got.
Sorry. Thanks, Anthony. Jasmine, do you have any comments?
No, no comment.
Alyssa?
Good evening. The policy committee met on January thirty first, I think. I thought I would see the minutes from that meeting on tonight's agenda, but I guess maybe it'll be on the next one. Just to let some folks know, we reviewed some policies that we thought were applicable to audit and finance. So we're going to share some of those with the audit committee to give you guys the opportunity to just take a look at them and let us know if there's anything glaring that you'd like to change. And there are a few policies on the agenda tonight. We do need to set a meeting for our next policy committee meeting, which I, we can do offline, but I'm looking at first week in March. And I'll send an email to the committee members after this meeting. I just wanted to make a quick comment. There was a discussion on social media today, and I, I know I feel like I'm becoming the social media town crier, but regarding the traffic at pickup and drop off times. And I will admit, it's getting pretty hairy, at least in the mornings when I'm there. So I'd like to encourage the community, if you're not happy about the traffic at pickup and drop off at the middle school and high school, send a letter to the superintendent at the prison. The school board and the school district has made our position known already. And you know, all, if you're not happy with it, you can support our position by a letter writing campaign. And that's how we can make change. But you know, if no, if, if we all just complain about it on Facebook and expect things to change, I hate to tell you, but the president or the superintendent at the prison is not reading the Beacon School Parents Facebook group. So that's all I have.
Thank you. John?
I've forgotten nothing tonight.
Kristen?
The next facilities meeting is on February seventeenth at seven PM. The building level committee, the building teams have already started meeting about the capital project. I believe invitations went out in the past week. And that's pretty much it. Thank you. Thanks to the principals of Glenham and JBF for really excellent presentations. It was fun to look at everything that they're doing and all the ways that you know, they've creatively been thinking about serving students and adapting during a really hard time. So thanks for coming and sharing that.
Thank you. Anthony White, did I do?
No, not yet.
Anthony?
The curriculum committee met on Wednesday, January twenty sixth. It was supposed to be in person, but we had to change to virtual, and it was a smart move due to the uptake in COVID cases. On the agenda was course proposal on the March eleventh of professional learning day curriculum mapping. So I'm just going to go over some of the details of the course proposals. So there were existing course proposals. They were reviewed and some courses that had received previous approval, however, were not offered this year or would be opening up additional sections, example, business courses, Italian level three, one B, which is a math class, and the science research program, additional sections for the twenty two, twenty three school year. New courses, they will be an AP art history and AP music theory course added to next year elective classes. Um, hold on, oh, shoot. The March eleventh Professional Learning Day, there was a discussion concerning March eleven, March eleventh Professional Learning Day. The day will run similar to the November. The morning will be a mandatory SEL, which is social emotional learning sessions. Teachers, teachers will have to meet with their departments either in the morning or in the afternoon, and there will be one elective chosen. The afternoon teachers will have planning time, choice of elective and planning time. Curriculum mapping on the district is partnering with Duchess Boses. Is it Duchess Boses, Saggy? Or is it Duchess Boses?
Duchess, yeah.
With a consultant from Duchess Boses to frame the mapping process. Coordinators will, will all receive tech support from Atlas Rubicon, which is the platform that they're using to map throughout the process. Below is a focus for each mapping session. Phase one is the co-creating a, a model unit. Oh, my gosh, why does that happen? I keep on losing my notes. I'm sorry. I split the screen here. Um, phase one, co-creation of a model unit. So February two nine, strategic bundling and prioritizing standards on three ten. Creating essential questions and during understanding and transfer goals for seven identifying assessment and desired learning outcomes. Five twelve mapping and learning sequences, six two peer collaboration, review and reflection. Phase two will be turnkey the process to map the remaining curriculum on June twenty seventh to the thirtieth from nine to twelve. And then the high school GED program, which is now the task test, the secondary completion. Beacon now has access to an online GED program. We're in the process of identifying qualifying students and create a fifteen week support session. The next full committee meeting will be Wednesday, March thirtieth at three thirty. Saggy, did you want to add anything to that?
You covered the whole thing nicely.
That's it for the curriculum piece. I have no other comments at this time.
Thank you, Flora.
Hi. So I'll start with the Duchess County School Board Association. We had two presentations at our meeting last week, and they both applied to our high schoolers. So there was a rep who came from Community Foundations. And this was really interesting because this is an organization I, I've never heard of, probably because I don't have high schoolers. But they are basically a place where they sort of consolidate all the various scholarships that are available for graduating seniors. So they're at Community Foundations HB.org. And she sort of demonstrated for us how, how the platform worked, but basically you can search for, you can search for scholarships by interest, by county, there, by family situation, by your major, by your high school. There's a lot of different ways you can sort of slice and dice the search. And the really cool thing about it is that the students complete one general application, and then the system sort of spits out a list of all the scholarships that would apply to them. There, there is a part that does require input from parents, like tax return info. And this, this website actually is listed in our high school guidance counselor section of the website. And, but she also said that she would be happy to, to come and talk to a senior class at the school, and I thought that might be a great idea. So I'll just pass her information on to you, Matt. But it's, it was really cool to see how many opportunities there are out there. And she said, you know, that there's often money left on the table. So it's something that we should be encouraging all of our seniors to be looking at and taking advantage of. The second thing was the Bard Early College Program. And this is something that I also didn't know anything about. And so one of the directors of the program, Matt Park, was there, and he was talking about how they need more students. And essentially, it's, they offer dual enrollment courses to high school students. And they have a Hudson Valley branch, and they basically operate this half day program out of Duchess Boses. And that he said a majority of the students are Latin, Black and Latinx, low income, first generation students. That most of the students that who go through the program are more likely to go on to college and complete their degree. They've got programs in Wapinders Falls, Hyde Park, Rhinebeck Pine Plains, so all over the Hudson Valley. It's for juniors and seniors. And they have things like a survey of US history and seminar course. That's sort of like the core start for juniors. And it also has a really strong liberal, liberal arts component. So there's a lot of like writing classes. My, my cat wants to be involved. There's a lot of writing classes, and it, it's a pretty advanced program. It looks like guidance counselors are usually the ones who recommend, who nominate students for the program. But I'll also, I'll send a link to that around to the board as well, because I think it would be, if it's not something that we're really investigating at the high school level, we should be. So that was pretty inspiring. Aside from that, that's all I've got this week, really.
Great, thank you.
I saw a program about that show, about, I saw a show about that program years ago, when it was first started. And it was, it, there were students who were also like at risk of not graduating. And they found, a lot of them found the higher level thinking, the more engaged classes, the respect and the, the requirements to be motivating. And kind of, you know, sometimes the behavior was driven by being a bit more bored. And so it was, yeah, there was a really interesting thing. And I've, I've always wondered about it because I've only known about the campus. I didn't know that they pushed out into communities.
Yeah, I think that's newer, a newer thing. So, yeah.
Okay, and the only comment I had was that I just wanted to let everyone know, I don't know if everyone heard that Mr. Kerr passed away. And he was a, just a huge contributor to the Beacon community. He was the founder of the Beacon Soccer Club. And it didn't seem appropriate to do a moment of silence because we do that for just former employees, but is a real loss for Beacon. He really gave a lot to Beacon. So I just wanted to let everyone know. Moving on, we have two items in new business. The first one is nominations and election for Boses Board of Education. So this, this year, there are two nominees for two spots. The nominees are Gully Stanford, who we met earlier, and I am looking for the name. I'm sorry, I'm totally having trouble with all my windows, my windows here. Okay, and Ralph Chu Mento from Spack and Kill. Gully Stanford sent a letter that's attached. And there is also a letter explaining all of this from Michael Reel, who's the board president of Boses. Are there any questions about this? Do we have any nominations?
Ralph Chu Mento Junior and Mr. Billy Stanford.
You're nominating both of them?
Yeah.
Second.
Great. Any comments or questions? All in favor of these nominations?
Hi.
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 Opposed? I'm in favor, passes nine to zero. Moving on to the second item in new business, we brought this up at the last meeting. Flora organized this discussion before we meet with or have a phone call with Jonathan Jacobson on Friday. Discussion of systematic solutions of community mental health needs prior to our meeting with local government official. So Flora sent, sent around some information to help start this discussion, but really we just want to, it, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be around this, but it seems like it's something that's come up a lot and definitely seems like a really worthy thing to focus on. Does anybody have anything to add to what Flora sent? Or any specifics?
I mean, so I, I just, I'd received it a little bit before the meeting, like you mentioned. I, I'd like to be able to take a look at it longer. Do we have to be in agreement tonight about what we bring up, or is it possible to add to the document before the meeting on Friday?
No, definitely add to the document. And I, I thought this would just be a really good opportunity to sort of start the discussion. I, for my part, I, I feel like there's no template necessarily for the most effective way to advocate as a school board. And so I feel like we're kind of making it up as we go along. And I, and I was aware, as I was putting this list together, of this feeling of like we've talked about before, being outside of your lane. And you know, what do you have sort of the, what do you have the knowledge base and the authority to advocate for? And so with that in mind, I mean, I think we were going to also get a little bit of feedback from some of the psychologists in the, in the school district. But I think at the end of the day, what I arrived at is that even though we're talking about support at the community level and at the, and at the, you know, the county or state level, you know, these are, this is about advocating for children and these, the, the issues that children are experiencing impact the school district and impact students. So I feel like I just sort of wanted to, to start from that, saying like, I, I feel like this is sort of unusual, this discussion. Like it kind of goes beyond what we've done before, but I'm hoping we can find a way to do it that is that is useful and isn't that is, that's useful and comes from a place as informed as it can be, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Conversation will help that.
Well, one thing that I was thinking of adding, but I need to kind of do a little just research, but there was an article in the Wall Street Journal recently about TikTok and the mental health impact it has, it's having on mostly adolescent girls. And, and I, and I noted that Cassandra Orsor brought up that they had, was it Grace Smith House that brought in? Or was it Grace Smith House comma? And then they did a online literacy program. I was, was it all one thing?
I don't think so.
Okay, it was a little confusing because I, it sounded out of their lane a little bit. But I, I think that's, it's really going to become critically important. And I think that there's definitely a dovetailing mental health crisis being fueled by, you know, these, these tools and platforms that are, you know, a bit, they're not, they're not curated, they're not monitored. Kids learn how to get around them much faster than adults. And I just don't see enough of a centralized conversation. And I was hoping, I, I want to add something about if there's going to be any kind of funding for programs earmarked where you know, being able to bring in something into the schools to help students become you know, better at, better at seeing and understanding and, you know, managing these tools for themselves and, and also being able to understand the impact they're having on their mental health and what's rewarding signs because it can get quite serious quite quickly. And, and in that article, the girl was put into, one of the featured people was put into an outpatient, or put into an inpatient facility, but it was only because she, her parents were tipped off by her grandparents who were tipped off by her cousins who were seeing some of the stuff that was happening online. Another girl was at risk of being sort of, she was meeting up with an adult man that had reached out to her on TikTok, and she really didn't know how to, that this wasn't just somebody following her who was her age. that had reached out to her on TikTok, and she really didn't know how to, that this wasn't just somebody following her who was her age. And so that was fortunately stopped ahead of time, but there's a lot of things like that happening around here too. And I am, I think it's, it's all dovetailing into like kind of a larger crisis. And I'd love to know if there's any awareness around that building and possible programming funds to access tools for them, but I'll put that in here. I just didn't.
Okay, great.
One of the things that I saw, and I love that you have number two about the brick and mortar for, you know, the mental health needs of kids and have that crisis center. One of the things that would be awesome, as I was thinking about it, was if each district was given a county liaison mental health support, and the districts could identify either like a middle school or high school. And you got to have a target audience, so that's why I said middle school, to catch them before the crisis becomes too large. Or a high school where that county support could take on 10 to 15 kids. And that would be their case management, to work with the family, to work with the student, and to work with the school, to have a well-rounded approach and a comprehensive approach from outside and inside the school, where that person would be a case manager, but also the, the health provider to tie county services with the school. And I think the identification process could be the school identifying their, the 10% or, or 5% at first, and hopefully that you get that. And like, there would be a, an entry process as well as an exit process. So almost like a county liaison, like a social worker. Instead of having a massive caseload narrowed down to 10 to 15, and they work with just one district. Or maybe if it's just one district, they have 20 to 25 students that they could service. But have it be a full integrated program where they could provide family supports, counseling supports, tie them with supports within the, the community and the community at large. And then come, being involved in that school plan to help them with the school and educational piece. I mean, that's just.
I mean, is that, do you know of any states or counties where that model is happening?
No, I'm pushing for something like that in Ulster, because they got funds. But it wouldn't be per district, that they would have someone shared between two or three districts. But I think like if I'm in a utopia world, right? I mean, if they could hire, like, there's 13 component districts, and 11 or 13, Matt, in Duchess.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, there's 13 component districts in Duchess. If they could hire 13 social workers or psychologists and, and get a caseload of 20 to 25 students in each district, and then, you know, have wraparound services for the kids that the school's identifying. And not only for the kids, but it could help the family and tie them into other county supports that are needed. But also, you know, be that case manager and be involved in the school aspect as well. Hey, how's the kid doing in school and stuff? So I think it would build that school-county connection type of thing.
Do you think, when I was reading through this, I was thinking that a lot of this stuff is, is sort of county level? And that we should, when we, when we make this list a little, I don't know, change it, however it's going to be, send it over to Nick Page also. And because I, I, yeah, and just from what you said, Anthony, a few meetings ago about the, you know, the county budget, and we're not really sure where some of this money is going. And federal money that the county has received for mental health, that we're not sure where it's going. I mean, it'd be an opportunity to ask for some accountability around it.
That's a good idea. I mean, and, and also, Anthony, could you capture sort of what you said at the? I did put a bullet at the bottom, sort of briefly summarizing what you said. But could you articulate it as well as you just did there on the, in the document?
Well, my, my verbal language is much better than my written language, but I will try.
Just do bullet points of what you want, like.
No, I got it.
Flora's more of a prose writer, but you can just.
Yes, you can do it, however it's less painful for you.
I have a problem. My written language is way better. This is sort of an aside, just, do our, does our high school have a peer advisor program? Matt or Saggy, do we have a peer advisor program in the high school?
Not a formal one written down, no.
I know that this is an advocacy letter, but for our own internal.
Yeah.
Focuses. My high school had a peer advisor group, and it was very valuable to a lot of kids, just something to think about for us.
Yeah, no, for sure. It's a great idea.
It's really good that you brought that up, because that was one thing that, I did have a, a call with Sue Serino. And she said, you know, she has some high schoolers that work with her, and they, they do surveys with her. And she says, one of the things they hear a lot of the times is, kids in high school, they're not going to go to their counselor. They're not going to go talk to the, the, any of the sort of mental or behavioral health supports in the school.
Yeah, and I, I hear my teenage daughter talking with her friends, and I'm always amazed at how maturely and how sensitive they are to each other's feelings and talking about how they're doing. And I know they're not going to talk like that with a, with a guidance counselor or a social worker.
Yeah, I, I, I wonder about that. It's, it's hard to sort of, to do that in a way that you feel comfortable within the school environment, especially if you're struggling with something in the school environment.
Yeah, I feel like they talk a lot about these things in the context of TV shows, actually. Maybe there's a way to tie it, tie it all into something that they're really interested in. Anyway, food for thought.
So, so Flora, thank you for this work. I supported 200%. And I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that you're also getting feedback from, from the boots on the ground with the psychologists and the, and the social workers in the school. You know, the, I'm wondering if, if, I don't, I wonder if the discussion would be more compelling with, we had some local statistics to go with it. But, you know, I know this meeting is Friday, so no pressure.
I mean, it's actually pretty easy to get statistics. I, you know, there's some at the top, those are, those are obviously national statistics. There are also New York State statistics that I came across, like, for instance, like 55% of high schoolers in New York State in the last year who had a severe depressive episode, didn't seek help or didn't receive help. I mean, so, yeah, there's definitely statistics that we can, we can add in there, maybe not at the county level, but certainly at the state level.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, sometimes helping the politicals do their job is, helps us.
Yeah, and I mean, I will say, so, you know, Hokel announced earlier this month about the, the crisis stabilization centers. And that, you know, there'll be one in our economic region, economic development region. So that means we would have two, the one in Poughkeepsie and wherever this other one would be. I, I guess I had a question, and I know Anthony, in particular, you seem to have a lot of, you've had conversations about this in the past. I mean, do we, is there, is there a feeling of like, the, these stabilization centers aren't enough? And so what I'm asking is, in terms of bricks and mortar, we're having this meeting, and we're advocating, is there something more that we should be asking for on the bricks and mortar side? Or are we really sort of getting what we need? I mean.
I think, I think I understand what you're trying to say is, a lot of times what happens, Flora, in my experience with it, is that the student will go to the emergency room, because there's a crisis. And there's either no beds available, so they're sent home, or they stay in the ER until there is a bed available. But then, once they get into that crisis center, whether it be a Four Winds, Rockland County Psychiatric Center, or a place like that, it's typically two weeks that they get to stay. So what they'll do is they'll do a med management plan, but two weeks isn't going to, isn't enough time. And it seems to be, that's what insurance will cover, right? So if they have additional funding to, to make it sometimes longer, because it's basically like a Band-Aid on, on, on a, on a severe wound that needs to be stitched and healed and, and put lotion on it and stuff, and it's just stopping the bleeding. And, and so how to fund it past the two weeks? So you could make meaningful progress, because what ends up happening is there's relapses then, right? The cut is reopened again, and, and it's like, there's a recurrence, whereas it's not fully vetted or there's no follow-up services. Maybe two weeks is enough, but what's the follow-up services? There's no follow-up services going to the house. There's no follow-up services with the family to see how they're doing, because the family's trying to make ends meet to put food on the table and work, but yet the student may need 24-hour supervision at the time. And so how do they do that? You know, so it's like, okay, the two weeks, that may be fine, but there's also a follow-up that doesn't typically happen. It's follow-up with your outside provider, but the person may not have an outside provider. Or they're so filled up in backlog that they can't get in to see that outside provider for the follow-up as much as they need to. Maybe it's two or three times a week, but they only get to see him one time a week, right? So there's these internal battle stewing, until they get to see him, and then they just explode again, right? So it's like a circular motion, which is sad.
I, I just want to say also, the County Stabilization Center is not accessible by. If you can't get there on your own, you can't get there, right? You know.
Right, and they'll transfer you.
They're not always available, they're not always called, let's say. I mean, it is, there is, there is a, there, there, I think the system's getting a little better, especially with Mental Health America and Beacon at the moment. But in the past, it's, you know, you just took them to the emergency room, and then you entered into that cycle that Anthony was talking about. And I have, I've had interactions with the Mobile Crisis Team, but there, it seems to hit or miss sometimes when, when I used to see them. So I would, you know, I'd like to see it more often, the Mobile Crisis Team. I'd like to, also like to see how, how to get the County Stabilization Center more, more accessible. But, but, you know, it doesn't matter how good the services, if you can't access it, it doesn't, you know, it's not going to do anybody good, right? So it's kind of my.
This is all really helpful. I appreciate it, guys. I, I mean, if I can get, if everybody is comfortable with, you know, with this list, plus whatever they want to add to it, if I can get all your feedback by Thursday, Thursday night, and then we can just sort of use it as a, as a, as a guide, as a rough guide for the conversation, that would be great. I mean, it's interesting, I also want to say, you know, looking at this stuff, there's also all of these really thorny budget issues that are involved. It's like the way that Medicaid is billed, and the, the way that beds are categorized. And it's, it, to a degree, it's like, it's so, it's such a complex system that you could really fall down a rabbit hole for like how deeply you want to advocate. So I'm, I'm, I think what we're trying to accomplish here is just sort of like a baseline of like, we know there are also other deep issues, but like here are the, you know, here are the top-line things. And we, we also are going to share it with other members of Duchess County School Boards Association. They, they actually, another board member in a different district brought up on her own that they, you know, that mental health was a huge issue, and that it's something that they want to talk about during Advocacy Week as well. And then I mentioned that we were putting this list, and now we're going to share it with the, with the group. So I think part of the exercise too is having the district speak in a unified voice and, and hitting the same points. And I think that has a lot of impact. So this may not be, we may not have the perfect list, and we may not be, you know, as, as detailed as, you know, we're not ready to write a bill, but we, we're ready to sort of start the, get the idea in their head of like, these are the five things that everybody's talking about in this region. So, yeah, so just to leave it there in terms of expectation.
Flora, thank you so much for doing all that work.
Yeah, thank you so much, Flora.
So. Moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Eleven, eleven.
I'm sorry, Craig, 11-11?
Yeah.
11.03.
11.14.
Are there any others? Jasmine?
I still don't see it on mine, but you said it was 11-17?
11-17, yeah. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve? 11.01 through 11-16, less 11-03, 11-11, and 11-14?
So moved.
Second.
Was it Alyssa and Kristen?
Yep.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you for the donation, 11.07.
Thank you for the donation. Happy to see another social worker on the instructional personnel. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Passes nine to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.03?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony and Kristen, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Both.
Opposed, I'm in favor, passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11-11? Flora?
Second.
So my, my question here is on the second paragraph. This is the petty cash, petty cash accounts item. It says, the Board of Education will appoint a custodian for each petty cash fund. Is that something that really is going to be appointed by the board? Or is that more at the level administratively? I just wonder if the committee discussed that, because I don't think we've ever made such an appointment, have we?
We have some petty cash, it's part of the reorganization meeting in July. So it's really, the, the hundred dollars is, is on a school district level, so it's the principal. And then there's one in district office, but I am pretty sure it's on the reorganization meeting for petty cash.
As long as it's on the list, because it says we have to do it, so.
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? I'm in favor, passes nine to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.14?
Like a motion to table 11.14.
Is there a second for that motion? Is, Anthony, do you mind explaining why you want to table it?
Yeah, there's three shells in there. Though we were changing all the shells, the wills or musts.
Anthony, I didn't notice.
Would you be, I mean, we can certainly table it, but would you be open to approving it with the amendment that it would be?
I think a first read has to be clean. I don't think it has, can't be amended.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I motioned it that way.
Okay, so I, do I have a second for Anthony's motion?
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm in favor, passes nine to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.17?
Anthony, so moved.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
So, I'm sorry.
Kristen, second? Okay, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, she said opposed.
Okay, and I'm in favor, so it passes eight to zero.
Eight to one.
Eight to one.
I'm sorry, eight to one, thank you.
Yeah, eight to one as well.
Oh yeah, I think I said for 11.03, so it's eight to one. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second, third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine to zero. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Hi guys.
Thank you.